And so with that, let's go ahead and move on to our 10:30 a.m. Item 6.13, Presentation by PG&E Representatives on Power Outages Occurring in Lake County. And let's see, I see that we do have Melinda Rivera with us. Good morning.
Good morning Chair Sabatier and good morning County Board of Supervisors and County Administrator. Can you hear me and see me?
We can see you and hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time this morning. I am, I have not used this platform on this machine, so let me see if I can go ahead and share the document. So please just give me one moment while I bring the presentation deck up, I hope. Hang on just one second, sorry, let me just...
No worries.
It's always fun to do this right. Okay, I think. All right.
Perfect.
Chair Sabatier and the County Board of Supervisors, can you see a blue, PG&E blue PowerPoint?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. All right, huge relief. Thank you so much. Okay, so good morning County Board of Supervisors, County Administrator. Thank you very much for your time this morning in allowing us to present to you some information about PG&E's work to mitigate wildfire risks in Lake County and provide additional information on power outages in Lake County. I'm joined this morning by the Regional Vice President for the North Coast Region of California, which includes Lake County. His name is Ron Richardson, so he'll be presenting with me this morning. And we're also joined by Carl Shaunerfer, who is the Senior Division Lead for the North Coast Region, which again includes Lake County, Mendocino County, and Humboldt County. So this morning, I'm going to talk with you about our wildfire safety program. California, as you know, continues to experience an increase in wildfire risk and a longer wildfire season. On this slide, we are, on this slide, we are sharing one of the tools we use when assessing wildfire risk in your community. This is the Fire Threat Map of California. It was developed by the CPUC in coordination with CAL FIRE and the U.S. Forest Service, and it's based on input from electric utilities, infrastructure providers, and other first responders and public safety agencies. This map helps to plan for potential wildfire and focused prevention efforts. You can see Lake County here on this map, and you can find this map and zoom in to particular locations, communities, and addresses by visiting IA.CPUC.ca.gov/FireMap. So we'd like to provide some additional context for the Community Wildfire Safety Program with just explaining that PG&E is looking to provide additional resources to support our communities before, during, and after public safety power shut-off events by employing the vegetation management program to manage trees and other vegetation located near power lines, continuing to harden lines and install sectionalizing devices that help reduce the size and the impacts of those public safety power shut-off events. In addition, we're also testing some additional tools and technologies, Ron will talk some more about this in a few minutes, to pinpoint how to best prevent and respond to the risk of wildfires. We all rely on electricity every day. We want to make sure that we work with our communities on solutions that minimize risks during times of high fire threat. So our focus with our wildfire safety work is not just to build our system for the climate risk that we are facing now, but also for the climate risk that we are going to continue to be facing and will be facing in the future. On this next section, we'll speak to enhanced power line safety settings in high fire threat areas. And so I'm now going to turn the presentation over to our Regional Vice President, Ron Richardson.
Thank you, Melinda, and good morning, everybody. So on this slide here, it's for the, to reduce wildfire risk, we are implementing the several additional safety measures given historical weather conditions. Number one that we're doing is implementing the enhanced power line safety settings. This is a setting that we're putting on the line that's going to be able to trip the line very quickly. It's going to be about a tenth of a second for that line to trip when it sees a fault. The second piece is, is that we're planning the 10,000 miles of undergrounding overhead of electrical distribution lines. There's a team developed now that is currently working on that to come up with that plan. The other piece too that we're looking, or we're actually doing is responding to all electrical outages as an emergency response. We have a metric now that measures the emergency response to make sure that we're there within an hour to make sure we can relieve the police or the fire department when we have a 911 call. We are actually treating all outages now in the Tier 2, Tier 3 areas the same exact way, and we're measuring those to make sure we have personnel within the hour. And the last piece is, is continuing with our vegetation management with reducing the risk of trees, doing more aerial patrols to hopefully find those issues before they actually happen. Let's go and go to the next slide. So more about how this works with the, with the new settings is, as you can see on this illustration, you can see that branches hitting, hitting that line. The old settings would have took anywhere from a second to around 10 seconds to see that fault. That might allow that piece of branch to, you know, catch on fire. With the new settings that we're putting in here, the more sensitive setting, it'll, it'll trip that line within a tenth of a second. The issue we have with this right now, with the settings that we have set up, is it will actually create a larger outage. We have a lot of fuses, fuses on our taps that would help minimize the size of the outage, but the problem is, is with these new settings, it's going to, it'll see that fault before the fuse is due. And again, some of these outages are going to be in remote areas, it's going to take personnel on foot to patrol, we'll be using helicopters to help restore those lines faster. Some of the other things that we're doing is, in the past, we've always had our helicopters dispatched from either Red Bluff or dispatched from Sacramento. We have actually staged helicopters in this region. We've got two helicopters sitting in Yukai at all times, so when these outages do appear, we can respond a lot faster. I'll go ahead and go to the next slide, Melinda. And this graph here, it just shows the data that we've seen. So as you can see, back when we put the fast trip settings out in July, we reduced the ignition rate by 50%. And this is the, something that we're really looking into to see, you know, is this going to change the way we look at, you know, future settings with our LRS? We're, we're every day looking at the data that comes in from these LRS, reviewing the faults and trying to better understand. Now, there is a total of five circuits that are in the area that have had these settings. It's the Clotik 1101, the Highlands 1103, the Conocti 1102, the Middletown 1101, and I believe the Upper Lake 1101 also that has these settings. But again, this just shows that by us putting these settings in here is we've decreased the ignitions by 50%. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Carl Shaunerfer.
Okay, just getting off mute here, hopefully everybody can hear me okay. Again, I'm Carl Shaunerfer. I'm the Senior Manager for PG&E's Humboldt Division, which includes Humboldt Lake, Mendocino, and Trinity Counties. And so while our Enhanced Power Line Safety Settings Program, and I may refer that as EPLSS because it's a bit of a tongue twister to repeat that, it does make our system safer for our customers. It may also result, as Ron mentioned, more frequent, longer duration customer outages as these crews must thoroughly patrol the lines to ensure there's no damage or hazards present, and then perform any necessary repairs before restoring power. And we certainly apologize to our customers who experienced an increased number and/or duration of outages as a result of these additional safety measures. We know that it's a burden to be without power, and that's why we're taking this pretty seriously and working very hard to improve communication, which includes providing customer notifications about outages through automated calls, notifying them they are without power, and providing an estimated time of restoration. We're also providing ongoing website updates on outage areas and estimated restoration times. And our media team will also share updated information as it becomes available through social media. And currently, our media team uses Twitter to bring broader awareness to customers. They've identified some issues with using Facebook and Nextdoor, but they're continuing to evaluate additional communication platforms to try and get a broader reach as we're trying to communicate with customers, make them aware of these outages. So in addition, we recently sent communications to all customers potentially impacted by this EPLSS change. We're, we, in these communications, we explain the new process and the potential impacts on them. We sent an email to customers that have an email address on file, and we did that on August 27th. And we also sent a postcard to customers that prefer communications by mail. We did that the first week of September. So as this is a relatively new process, we're continuing to make additional improvements to our internal systems so that they're better coordinating internally, so that we can then improve our response times and communicate better externally. But customers can also sign up for alerts and view an outage map by visiting PGE.com/Outages. So next slide, please. So we're working every day to improve the safety and reliability of our system for our customers and the communities we serve. And on this slide, you can see a list of the circuits with EPLSS settings as well as how many outages that have been experienced so far since we implemented these changes late in July 2021. And as Ron mentioned earlier, we're fine tuning the sensitivity of these devices, which may result in fewer outages moving forward. Next slide, please. So throughout this year, there have been additional planned and unplanned outages in Lake County. In response to your questions about the number of outages and causes, the next two slides here will show all outages in Lake County that occurred between January 1st and September 13th of this year. And as we discuss on the next slide, there are many reasons why customers may experience an outage. So these outages have had a range of impacts from just one customer to over 2,500 customers. And I'm also aware of a follow-up question from Supervisor Jessica to provide data for outages impacting 100 or more customers, and I believe Melinda is following up on that request. So circuits out of the Highland Substation here had larger-than-average customer impacts due to the cash fire. And as always, whenever there's an outage on PG&E electric power line, we do our best to restore power as quickly and as safely as possible. So yeah, go ahead and, next slide, please, Melinda. So we do have a responsibility to our customers to improve the safety of our system, and more than half the outages that we saw on the previous slide were a result of planned work. This work, it's conducted to improve and strengthen our system and reduce wildfire risk, and it may require us to de-energize the power lines, to do that safely. So we do this for the safety of our crews, working on the electric lines and the, and the communities in which this is taking place. So I took a closer look at the data this morning, and over 360 of these total outages were for routine maintenance and equipment upgrades. And given that we have 716 distribution miles in Lake County being in high-fire-threat districts, there have been an additional 293 outages to support the maintenance due to our more robust wildfire safety inspections that we're doing and the system hardening improvements that we're making. So substantial portion of those outages are really to improve the safety of the system, particularly for wildfires. This can include, include replacing poles, crossarms, conductor wire, you know, the connectors, all again to make the system safer. So, but we do know losing power is disruptive, and, and we'll restore power as quickly and safely as possible. The other on this slide refers to fires, snow, lightning, and in some cases, we have no cause found. That doesn't mean there wasn't a cause, it just may not be evident based on the patrol. You know, in the, in the example Ron provided, if we had a tree branch on a line, it could be that that tree branch caused the system to trip, and then when we go out and patrol, that may have bounced off the line, and we wouldn't necessarily know that that was, you know, the cause. So, next slide, please. All right, so we are taking some steps here to improve. We're fine tuning the equipment by adjusting the sensitivity settings based on real-world data to avoid unnecessary outages. We're also increasing our system communications to allow the devices to communicate with each other, so only small, smaller outages occur. So that's a process we're working through now. And we're also improving the coordination of the restoration patrols to ensure the PG&E team members are in the right place to patrol and restore as quickly as possible after an outage, and as Ron also mentioned, utilizing helicopters as well. Next slide, please. Okay, these Enhanced Power Line Safety Outages, I want to remind you that they're, they're not PSPS events, but we are leveraging some of the customer support programs that we develop for public safety power shut-off. We have resources that customers can take advantage of to help ease the burden of losing power. For example, we have a portable battery program here that provides fully subsidized batteries to low-income medical baseline program customers who live in high-fire-threat districts like Lake County. We also have a generator rebate program that provides up to $1,000 for eligible customers, and I'll go into more detail on that here on the next slide. We also partner with 2-on-1 to provide free confidential support and resources during times of critical need. And, and also, you know, in light of the outages impacting Cobb Elementary School in particular, and then, and recognizing the importance that ventilation is in the COVID pande, pandemic, excuse me, environment, we made the decision to install an automatic transfer switch and provide a backup generator to help mitigate outage impacts at the school. And I believe the transfer switch has already been installed, and we will be hooking up a generator soon if we haven't already done so. So we know these programs don't fully make up for losing power, but we're hopeful that they'll help bring the community some additional support. Next slide. So here, there's more detail on our more recent generator rebate program. Customers qualify for a rebate if they live in a high-fire-threat area, Tier 2 or Tier 3, and either they rely on well water pump for their water needs, or if they are a medical baseline customer who does not qualify for our portable battery program, or something else we're doing that's new is also essential small business customers like small grocery stores, dental offices, urgent care, et cetera. Through this program, we're offering $300, $500, $1,000 rebates for eligible customers based on the retail product that they purchase for their generator. So also note that eligible customers, it's a small asterisk here, are also, if we have customers that are participants in our CARE or FARA rate programs, they also receive an additional $200 rebate. And you can, you can learn more about this, and our customers can learn more about this with respect to generators and our battery rebate program at PGE.com/BackupPower. So I will turn it back over to Melinda.
Thank you very much, Carl. This next slide talks about the PG&E Reported Safety Mobile App. So this provides an opportunity for any customer to report and submit photos of non-emergency safety concerns directly to PG&E. By downloading the app, you can take a picture of issues that you see in the community, and PG&E teams will investigate every safety issue that is provided through this mobile app. Once you have the app, you can report an issue by tapping the Report button on the app, snapping a photo, and describing the area of concern. So this is something that we just rolled out. I know, I think I just installed it myself a couple of months ago, so we're, we're eager to hear more from our community members as they see any issues in the community. More information and tools to prepare for outages. So there are a variety of wildfire safety tools available online. This includes resources such as address alerts, information available in multiple languages, the weather and public safety power shut-off weather page, the forecasting weather page, preparedness tools and activities for kids are here at this site, the Safety Action Center and the Backup Power webpage can all be found by visiting PGE.com/WildfireSafety. Thank you very much for your time this morning, members of the Board of Supervisors and county staff. If there are any community members who have questions that they don't have the opportunity to ask us this morning during the question and answer session, or if you think of another question you have after this presentation is over, please feel free to call us at 1-866-743-6589, or you can also email us your questions at wildfire safety at PGE.com.
Thank you very...
And that concludes our presentation, and we're now available for any questions.
And is it possible for, oh, perfect, you read my mind. I wanted to stop the sharing for a second. Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate the detail and the data provided, but I am 100% sure we have some questions, and let's start with Supervisor Pisca.
I appreciate you coming. I, I first want to thank you for installing the transfer switch at Cobb School. As we've talked about many times, that is a community that can't be supported by any substation, and having that school lose so much time because of power outages, planned or unplanned, is really disruptive to, to the students and their families, so I appreciate that. The reason I asked you to come is I was just looking back at the number of outages that we experienced in the month of September. And when I got the data emailed to me earlier, it, it had real low average numbers for customers who experienced outages. So I, you know, on September 4th, we had 2,000 people out in Cobb and Middletown with 700 people out in Lower Lake and Cobb on the Conocti side. On the 7th, we had 2,900 people out. On the 17th, we had 2,080 people out. On the 19th, we had 51 people out, and on the 24th, we had 704 people out. And so, you know, we really need to talk about the sustainability of these outages. While all of us appreciate and are sensitive to wildfires and your equipment being ignition sources, you know, we have to look at this, how can we, how can we ask these customers to experience this amount of outages for, for years more to come? We've been doing this for four years already. So I, I appreciate that you're here and you're, that you put together this, this presentation that explains why we're experiencing more of these outages, but we really need to get to, get to the point of, of how we're going to manage the outages. And I personally don't feel like adding more generators to the mix is the sustainable way forward. We just can't do that. They already pose extreme fire danger threats to our communities to have all of these people running generators. They're toxic to our air, so we need to get to the place where we can have the, the people that live in these extreme tier zones with backup generation, with batteries. So those are my comments. I, I'm not sure that I have very many questions at this point because we've had the opportunity to speak, but I wanted to get that out. You know, one of, we did speak earlier on the messaging, and, you know, when we have to answer questions from constituents, they want to know why. And I know that that was one of the things that you were struggling with, is, is being able to get that why out to, to our constituents and the residents. And Twitter is not a platform that's used widely throughout Lake County. Facebook is the king here, and so I would really encourage you to figure out how to communicate with your customers via Facebook. More transparency is better. You know, we've been through a lot. This is a very strong community, and, and they want, they want real answers and they want to know why. And so I think there's room for improvement there. I do appreciate everything that you've been doing. I appreciate that you've been going to the municipal advisory councils and talking directly to the customers via town halls, but I think there's still more room for improvement. So that's, those are my comments right now. I don't know if anybody else has any.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah. What I would like to see when we talk about data is battery backup opportunities to be taken advantage of here in Lake County for individuals, also the generators. You know, how much data do we have on, you know, who's taking advantage of these programs? Obviously, you know, in Lake County, we have a lot of low-income, a lot of retired folks on set, you know, salaries or set budgets on a monthly basis. And what actually, I know you guys have programs up there, but what has come into Lake County? I'd like to see some of that data for the entire county, not just by district. You can break it down like that, but what has come into folks on wells that have generators or been available with the backup, our medical baseline folks with the backup battery stuff? I'd like to see some more of that data, maybe you have that, or I missed it, but I didn't see it anywhere in the stuff we got, so I'd like to obviously see that. With the fast trip sensors, or whatever they're called, that are starting out, I know it was just implemented. I would have wished that we would have been part of the conversation before that was implemented. I know I wasn't. I don't know if any of the rest of you were contacted. All we know that they started going out, and then we got an explanation. So communication and collaboration, you know, on decisions being made in your guys' boardrooms, or, you know, ideas. I think it looks good on paper. We understand why it's happening, but we already know that it's going to intensify the outages. The other question I have on the, the trip sensors that are going on, this will be the first winter that we're going to go into it with, with it. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but from now on, it's going to be that way whether it's summer or winter, and this will be the first one. And obviously, we're going to hope for a healthy winter, a lot of rain, a lot of wind, if we snow, some other things. You know, how is that going to affect us this winter when it's very cold, you know, and we have a lot of seniors that need their heat and other things? You know, has that been thought about? And maybe you guys have already had those discussions, but I didn't hear anything about that today in the report, because this will be the first winter that we'll be going through it with these new sensitive trip sensors closing right off the bat and shutting the system down. You know, and then how is that going to affect being able to fly during the winter, inspect the lines? That is a concern of mine going into this winter once again. As we move through, just seeing the numbers and the data there on the outage, outages, 205 in, you know, the Middletown Substation, I know some of those were for, you know, work that needed to be done, but a lot of them were outages that just were unknown or whatever. So very concerning, like I said, as we move through that. I know that you guys are looking to work at, look at undergrounding, other opportunities, some big announcements made. I think those are long-term strategies that will be obviously worked on by everybody, but, you know, the immediate impact is what we're dealing with, with the phone calls and other stuff. The other thing I would like to hear, because the last time we got an update about outages and stuff, people making claims for lost food, you know, even electronics that burn up during outages and other things. I'd like to see some data on that, that what's coming into county constituents. I know I get calls, me and Jessica get a call definitely from Mr. Mitchell, keeps us on point with PG&E. You know, constant conversations of how do they recover lost food and other equipment or stuff that may be happening? They put in a request, but as it was said one time right here in this boardroom, yeah, you can put in a request, but we'll see what happens. I hope that that's being looked at from a point of reinvesting in the folks that are investing in PG&E and paying a bill every month, that if they lose, they lose stuff during these outages, that they're reimbursed for those somehow. I don't know how we track that, but I would like to see an update on that from PG&E. Those are some of the comments, obviously. And then ultimately... during these outages, that they're reimbursed for those somehow. I don't know how we track that, but I would like to see an update on that from PG&E. Those are some of the comments, obviously. And then ultimately, myself, and I know this is probably a controversial statement, but on the tree trimming, to me, it doesn't make any sense to cut two feet off a tree and then have to come back and spend more money two years later to do that. If there's opportunities, work with communities, HOAs, the county, in some more robust cutting operations, instead of just trimming, is, is just for me, long-term thinking, you know, and a better use of those funds, because every time a contractor has to be called out every other year, that costs money, and they got to get the money from somewhere, and most likely, it's going to be from the ratepayers. Also, just the cleanup during, you know, the tree trimming, tree trimming, a brush, making sure it's taken off in a timely manner. We've had many incidences, I know of myself, and I want to speak for anybody else, but I've got calls of, hey, PG&E came out and trimmed this last year or two years ago, and it's still laying on the ground here, and we're supposed to be clearing fire hazard. So a more robust chipping program, and then working with landowners to remove the stuff that does need to be removed if they request it. I understand, being a county official, some folks don't want that or anybody on their property, but we need to, PG&E really needs to increase those opportunities to get things chipped, removed, and off properties that want to have them. Like I said, we've all gone into places, I just place out on, you know, a fire hazard area out on Spruce Grove Road. I was out in the Novoranch area, and there were trees out there that were cut two, three years ago or still on the ground. Try and work with the Firewise Communities and stuff to get those things reported, but it just needs to be an improvement there to make sure that we're taking care of all the dead and dying trees that are coming down from the fires, but also the ones being removed for the PG&E vegetation programs that you guys are running. So I know it's a lot, probably got a bunch more, but I do appreciate the engagement, and hopefully you'll be engaging the county with the undergrounding opportunities here in Lake County, and we'll continue to grow on that. That is a long-term project, I think, but there can be some immediate wins, because we all know our areas, we have local PG&E folks that will probably help in making those decisions, people that have gone to our schools, lived here all their lives, on what would be the most bang for your buck when you're doing those undergrounding. I think, you know, I'll just put it right out there, I think that Lower Lake Transmission Line and some other things in the area on our side, we had a couple of fires in Hidden Valley, but looking at those things, our opportunities there that I think we could get, like I said, the most bang for our buck to take care of different, different issues that are happening. We're not going to be able to underground everything, but it's a tool, I think, that's going to help us build more resiliency with the hardening of the wires and everything else that's happening and the sectionalizing. So continued communication is the best thing, and responding to the claims of our constituents in Lake County, I think is a big issue, and I'd like to see some, some data put together on all of that, on what's coming back into, in the county to kind of mitigate these fire issues. And I, Jessica said it great, we all understand why it's happening, but we've got to make it more realistic for the folks, each and every one of us that have the outages, because we've all experienced them. Nobody has been spared these, these outages at this point in Lake County. That's all I got.
If I could, I'd like to clarify if I could real quick. You made a comment about, you know, are these settings going to be continued in through the winter? They're not, and I apologize not clarifying that through the presentation. These are going to be summer and fall settings only. Once we get out of fire season, we'll be putting the LRs back on their normal settings to allow them to, you know, close in two or fall three times, but we need to first get out of that, that fire season. I hope I clarified that up for you.
Well, you know, I guess to respond to that, if you ask CalFire, fire season right now is all year round. So that's why I made the comment. I appreciate that you guys are thinking that. So what, on what date? What triggers that? What triggers it? What date are you guys thinking?
There's not a date, it's all, it's all about conditions. Like, like you said, you know, we have a meteorology team that's be looking at the fuels, they'll be looking at the moistures, moistures in, on the ground level, and once it hits a certain percentage, I don't know what the percentage is, but once it hits that certain percentage, then we'll be considered out of fire season for PG&E, and we'll be terminated the settings back to normal. The other thing too, that I want to kind of clarify too, is when we first set these settings on the high trip, or the fast trip, it was taking out the substations. It was taking out a very large area. And what we've done now is we went back to these line reclosures that have these sensors, to where they're going to be able to communicate again, to where at least the outage will be brought down to just a zone, to where most of these outages, instead of you seeing 2,000 customers, it's going to be around 500 customers, which I still, is not a great scenario, but at least it's a lot better than what we were seeing in early September, and actually in August also. So, and I believe at this time, all those settings are in Lake County now on all five of those circuits, so again, we should be seeing a lower customer count, which will actually help reduce the area that we have to patrol to get people back on faster.
Thank you for that. I do want to clarify, and I kind of want to check in with Supervisor Simon. I think when he mentioned the wintertime was because of how cold it gets getting into fall, where higher elevations, and so the issue of turning off power when in late October, early November, which we have experienced PSPS conditions before at that time, that it can get really cold in a household where there's no access to heat, if there's no access to electricity. I think that's what you were alluding to in that. So not necessarily a specific season, but just a condition in the weather outside. It might be dry, but it might also still be cold. And that becomes an issue for the, your, your clients to deal with and our constituents to deal with, because those are kind of contradicting situations where you're kind of requested to have energy in order to find the heat.
Well, that goes for the heat waves when we have a PSPS or outage in the middle of summer, and then we have the outages in late fall or the middle of winter, and we have vulnerable residents who can't, there's no way for them to cool down, and there's no way for them to stay warm.
Any further comments or questions? So I did want to, I do have some things on my list here, and I appreciate you being here today and providing a presentation and hearing us out as to what our concerns for the community is, but I want to start off with, you are overseen by the CPUC, and I want to start off with one of the CPUC's mission and goals. And it says that they are dedicated to ensuring that we have safe, reliable utility service at reasonable rates. So I think that we're very focused on the safe because of past history, and, and it's just a difficult task to deal with the circumstances of extreme weather and extreme heat, extreme dryness, and that sparks can easily start a fire these days. But it's the reliable part that I really want to focus on today, because turning it off to be safe makes it unreliable as a service. And so you showed some data that says that the majority of the outages was planned work. What are you working on so that you can do that work but continue electricity? Is there generators that you can bring along with your team so that it can generate enough electricity to continue feeding whoever's down the line? Is there redundancies that you can create so you can work on some of the poles and some of the lines and not have to shut off power? This, this is all created by you, not by the weather and safety reasons. How can you implement something better so that you don't have to turn off the power to be able to do some of the work you're doing? If you can reduce that 67% planned electrical outages, then I think that right there already we're doing a whole lot better. When it comes to weather, I think there's some unpredictable situations to deal with that can be understood as to why it's easier to just, or safer to just turn off the power, but if it's planned, how can we plan better? How can your teams be better equipped so that we don't have to turn off the power? The undergrounding of wires, I think, is probably one of the most important things. We recognize here in the county where the majority of these PSPSs occur. I haven't received any guidelines, I know I've spoke with, with Melinda before about this, but knowing our history with fires, knowing our history with PSPS, what do we need to do to be best positioned to be on this list? Like I saw Alameda on the list of potential counties that might receive funding for underground wires, and no offense to Alameda, but they are nowhere close to as rural as we are. And our need to reduce the fire threat so that we don't have to have our electricity turned off, in my opinion, granted, it's a biased opinion, is much higher than in some of those places that were listed, in the counties that were listed in there. So what can we do to be best positioned so that we don't end up, and, and this has nothing to do with you, in the state of California, there's a rural urban issue where we end up last as far as getting access to some of the funds that we need to provide the safety and services that our community requires. I want to make sure we don't end up last, where counties in the Bay Area get access to these funds and we get whatever crumbs are left over. And so I'm hoping that you can provide those details so that we can be best positioned and ready to jump on these projects. I also would like to see a, so there's, there's one thing that I know I can't say anything negative at all about PG&E when it comes to fire recovery. For example, the cash fire, the fire is almost still going, and you're in there rebuilding your infrastructure. You, you have your little army that you bring in, and they do a fabulous job. Those, those blue trucks are such a positive thing in our community to see. We know what's going on, they're fixing something, they're rebuilding something, and it's appreciated because fires can be absolutely traumatic, and any kind of respite from the trauma is But we always rebuild exactly what we had, because that's the easy way. At what point can we have plans engineered to do underground wiring so that when we're in a state of emergency, we can make it happen when we do the rebuild? We, we know that you can bulldoze right through people's yards and right through trees and right through everything. Why can't we do the same thing with building underground wiring? If we're going to rebuild an area that just got burnt, how simple would it be to do the same process as bulldozing and everything else, to say, okay, instead of putting poles back up where it could be a potential issue in the future, here's a plan that we've already devised, now go ahead and just start putting in the conduit and put the lines underground, rather than rebuilding exactly that what we know ends up being an issue that we end up turning off because it's liable to get hit by trees? So I, I think that we're not preparing ourselves for those types of things, we're just doing it because it's what we've done and it's the easy way out, but we have to figure out how to get these plans done and put on the shelf. That way, when they need to be pulled, we're ready for it, and then we actually make change in that community, rather than recreate the same potential hazard in that community. The generator rebate, it's, it's, I appreciate the effort, but at the same time, you're, you're running against the clock. We have AB 1346 sitting on the governor's desk, I believe it's still sitting there, I don't believe it's been signed, where eventually generators will be banned in the state of California, and let's not go off on that topic. But the fact is, just as Supervisor Pisca said, it's an added potential hazard in the community, and then it's not even going to be something that, that, that can happen in the future. We have to really focus on the battery backup process. It's a much easier connection to make, it connects directly to PG&E, so when the power's on, the batteries get recharged. Generators need to be refilled, and if we're talking about elderly, if we're talking about medically fragile, those people don't have the same mobile ability as everyone else who has better capabilities to move around. And so refilling their generators becomes a problem. And my issue that I bring up continuously is, living in a rural area, the amount of pumps for water is absolutely crucial, and, and those people are required pretty much to have some kind of backup energy source. But again, not everybody has access or the capability to get that alternative source. And just, I was listening to Supervisor Simon discussing tree trimming. The previous, and I don't know if it still is, the previous way to trim a tree made our trees look ridiculous. So you'd have like a big U in the middle of a tree because, hey, it's three or four feet away from the wires. But now, because there's the possibility of a branch falling off and hitting the wires, I think we need to get away from partially trimming and, and maybe, like Supervisor Simon was saying, think a little bit more long-term. Maybe we need to look at completely getting rid of a tree and replanting other trees in different places where they're not near the lines, because these trees just keep coming back, coming back, coming back, and, and they're obviously a problem, because that's part of the reason that you're turning off our electricity. I know I, I, you, you shared some positives of 50% ignition rate decrease, but unfortunately, that also meant an increase in potential power outages because that's how you get rid of the ignition rate possibility. We need to work on the reliability of the service, and I've provided some ideas and examples of things we can focus on, and I really hope that you can work with us to make sure that we are going to be at the top of the list to get some of these underground electrical wires. And I'm, I'm just going to speak for other people's district, between Middletown and Cobb, those two areas almost seem always to be in the dark. And so if we can just focus on a small area, it's got to be possible to make those wires underground. We have to make it happen. We can't continue, we're in a world where we're changing to remote work from home, and yet your home may not have power. It's easier for a business to figure out how to do these things and operate and pay for the equipment, but on an individual's home, it makes it that much more difficult. And we, we have a changing world, and at the same time, we have kind of stepping back policies on how to make things safer, and I think we have to try to balance that out in a better way. So I'm going to stop right there. Appreciate the conversation, appreciate the comments also made by my colleagues, and I will open it back up for anyone else who wants to follow up or opening it for the public. Supervisor Simon?
One final comment, and don't want it to go missed here. You know, obviously, as we are still in the midst of the pandemic, you know, and the fires and devastation we've had over the last six years here in Lake County, you know, every one of these outages just is, is one more obstacle for our businesses to thrive. And that's a huge, huge disadvantage, you know, at this point in Lake County. So, you know, the business community is suffering also. I know a lot of them have gone out and purchased and tried to do what they can, but some of them are still unable to do that. So, you know, it's just one more thing that our business community is having to deal with, and I know you hear that from all over in all the regions, but here in Lake County, it just, it can't, you know, really express how devastating it can be, especially to our Cobb Mountain businesses, the Middletown area, but throughout the county, all over, the folks can't afford it. They're just struggling to keep the doors open right now, and every time it's, you know, there's an outage, that just is a loss of revenue. So that's something else to consider too, from PG&E's standpoint.
And I do want to add one more thing, because I feel I was very negative, I want to provide something positive. When we first experienced PSPS, it was pretty much countywide. It has absolutely changed in the scope of what a PSPS looks like. Unfortunately, it seems that the usual suspects have to feel the brunt of a PSPS, and I'd love to see us work together to make sure we can decrease that, that, that blow, if we can. So thank you for changing the scope and minimalizing as much as you can. Let's keep trying and keep going further. And with that, let's go ahead and open it up for the public, and we have a couple of hands up. Let's go ahead and start with Julia Bono.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, excellent. As you mentioned, my name is Julia Bono. I've lived in places where all power and utility lines were placed underground before moving to Lake County where they're not. Not only is this underground wiring practice vastly preferable from an aesthetic point of view, so that we could better enjoy our natural scenery in Lake County without ugly power lines, poles, and damaged or removed trees, but it notably reduces the chances of outage, outages, is far more fire and windproof, and virtually eliminates the annual cost of tree trimming to prevent them from interfering with above-ground power and utility lines. I think the trees are less of an issue than the highly problematic overground wiring practice, and removing trees creates substantial environmental and aesthetic damage. I therefore ask the county and its utility providers to strongly consider making the investment involved to put all utility lines underground in Lake County, especially in places like Middletown that have been impacted by wildfires and PSPS power outages. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is phone 6205.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. First of all, I want to bring everyone's attention to the large amount of generators that have been sitting for months now at this PG&E substation at Kits Corner. We've been attempting to find out what those generators are available for. We don't see them moving and being used in other areas of the county that have needs. I don't understand that. I'd like to make sure that- I'd like to make sure that you, the supervisors, are aware of what I'm talking about and perhaps can get better answers from PG&E. I also am a part of a group of people who was in an area where the PSPS, the last outage we had, was made in less than eight hours of notice. Also, I'm with a group of people who attempt to actually locate the benefits and the resources that PG&E keeps saying is available. We make the phone calls, we track the sources, we can't find them. And that goes for battery, batteries, food replacement, taxis, hotels, and customer resource centers. The bringing of the need for this county to have to use generators with propane with our large population of elderly and low income is such a tinderbox. It is crazy to bring that into Lake County. And with the recent revelations of your company's responsibility for the Dixie Fire, you have us in this absolutely horrendous position of having to worry about, are you going to kill us? Are you going to start our county on fire and it'll be the time when the conflagration can't be stopped? You have to do better than you're doing. The public outreach that you say is in place is not reaching the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And just kind of do want to pivot back to PG&E and see if you have a response or if it's possible to provide a response as far as those generators at the Kits Corner area? And maybe you need to look into it and provide that response to us via email, and then we can get back to our constituents.
Hi Chairman Sabatier. I, I can defer to Ron or Carl as well, but those generators, I believe that the, that the committee member is referring to, that is for temp gen at the Conocti substation, which is very close to Kits Corner. So we do have three substations, the Hartley Substation, Conocti, and Clearlake Substation. And of course, the Clearlake Substation is not located in the city of Clearlake, but it's, it's over there south of Lakeport. So those three substations do have temp gen that we have staged at those three substations. And so we have temporary generation available to use there during PSPS events. If it's, if, if it is safe to do so, if the weather conditions permit. I didn't have that slide in the slide deck this morning, so I apologize. I know we've presented on that before, but if you have any questions, if you need me to provide additional detail and writing, I can provide that as well. But those, we do have generators staged at those three substations at Conocti, Hartley, and Clearlake.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I'll just follow up on that, Melinda, and explain, so there's a difference between distribution lines and transmission lines. And there may be areas where we can serve customers out of a substation, but we can't get power to that substation because the, the transmission line might be in scope for a PSPS event. So if we have generation staged at those substations, then it allows us the opportunity to then provide power to our customers through that substation out through those distribution circuits that are not currently in scope for a power, for a power outage.
Thank you very much. Next comment, Kathy McCarthy.
Hi, this is Kathy McCarthy, and I just wanted to first echo about the hardship it is on our older population and those who could try to serve them during these PSPSs. And not only just the frustration of putting together a generator, you know, in the dark, but also it creates trip hazards in their house. You're trying to be careful with extension cords to lamps and that sort of thing. So it's, it's very near and dear to my heart that these can be avoided. But also, I live in a neighborhood that was, was destroyed in the Valley Fire, and about 18 months ago or so, we were part of a program with taller power poles and this more thickly insulated wire as part of that power program, or sorry, pilot program. So my question is, when it comes to time to talk about putting things underground, are neighborhoods like mine going to be overlooked because we're already part of this pilot program? Or are we still on the table to be considered? That's all.
Thank you very much. And if PG&E would like to respond to that?
I'll go ahead and jump in on that. It's a great question, and it's still, we're still going through the process of how we're going to go after the undergrounding, where we're going to start. But that, that would be one of the considerations too. If a line was already hardened like the line you're describing, would that still maybe be considered on the top of list or would it be maybe moved down? At this time, we do not have the answer to that.
I think that we'll probably need to follow up on a larger discussion on those items as well to get some deeper detail. And next question or comment is from phone 6205.
Yes, I don't know if anybody has addressed the loss of cell phone, phone services in PSPS outages and the loss of 911. And that our county is now working with an evacuation system that relies on the internet functioning and being able to be accessed. That is part of our overall evacuation plan for the county. But every PSPS has large areas where the cell service, the, the phone service, the internet service is simply blacked out. And we can never know ahead of time how to deal with it. As far as I know of, there is no legislation that's been successfully made that requires that the internet companies and the cell companies have generator backup for their towers. But where is the responsibility of PG&E? Where's the conscience of PG&E to make sure that we, the people, can maintain our emergency notification? It isn't acceptable what has gone on.
And thank you very much for your comment. Wondering if PG&E staff have a comment to make on that or a response as far as what might be happening, what laws are in play, or anything of the kind?
Hi Chairman Sabatier, and thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get the caller's name, but I'm happy to look into that and see what legislation is passed regarding our telecommunications partners and battery backup at the cell phone towers. I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me this morning, so I can provide that to county staff after I investigate that. Thank you for the question.
And just putting out my opinion that while yes, there is a collaborative cooperation between PG&E serving these towers, I do believe that some of that responsibility needs to lay on those who have the towers where they should have backup generation as most do these days. And I know there was, I believe there was a bill to extending the amount of hours that that generation needed to be provided for. But it's a matter of if the upgrades have been met, and also if it's a new tower that's been installed. But we, we do have to place some, some of that responsibility, if not a larger portion of that responsibility, on the people who choose to have towers in places where service unfortunately doesn't always happen. So, but it would be nice if we can do something together. I see no further hands up. I want to bring it back to the board, and we do have a hand in the boardroom. So let's go ahead and make that happen.
I want to say a word for an 85-year-old man who is going to grieve when Loggers Unlimited cut down a huge oak. It hurts our hearts to have so many trees cut down. And I think I had my life written this morning. Something made me turn over to the right side of the road, and here comes Loggers Unlimited. I don't even think he saw me. He was in the middle of a very narrow road that I live on. So I am going to write you a complaint, PG&E, about Loggers Unlimited. I've heard two or three different complaints, and I have one from this morning. They are not polite. They are not professional. And if you argue with them about a tree, they will back down and not cut it down. Trees do make oxygen. And our trees are going. People are cutting them down. It's very sad. People grieve for trees like they grieve for people when Loggers Unlimited cuts down the trees for PG&E. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that's it for public comment. Are there any further questions or comments from board members? So I, I do know that, I appreciate the conversation, and we've hit on a couple of different topics, provided some suggestions, looked at to receive some more data, wondering if, are we going to be receiving that via email? Would you like to come back and provide some of that information so we can continue the discussion? I, I think that we'll, we'll figure that out, but I'm hopeful that you got those questions and those requests down so that we can make sure to follow up on, on that and then figure out how, how we will meet again.
Yeah, thank you so much again, Chairman Sabatier, and everyone on the Board of Supervisors and county staff. I have been taking notes, and so I will be following up and I'll work with the county administrator office to determine, in addition to any written replies, how else the county would like us to follow up. So thank you again for your time this morning. We really appreciate you allowing us to come and present with you.
Okay, and thank you very much for coming. And just from my behalf, I know that our frustration is with the company as a whole, not with the individuals representing the company here today. Thank you so much for being here to not only present, but also listen to us and also respond to what you can respond to at this moment in time, and looking forward for the conversation to continue.